We'll call our meeting to order tonight, Renata, if you do the roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Etinger?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Uh-huh. Let's rise for our invocation. We have Stuart Bryant from the Trinity Church with us tonight. Almighty and everlasting Father, you sent your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, to rescue us from the darkness of sin and ignorance and to bring us light and salvation. Though we wandered far from you and though we continue to wander from you to this day, you sent your Son to bring us back to you. He gave his life. He who was and is the Lord of all sacrificed himself that he might restore us to fellowship with you. So grant that we might acknowledge our rebellion against you, that we might flee from our self-centered obsession with our sinful desires and that we might return to you. And grant that in returning you may pour out your Spirit upon us and enable us to live lives of sacrificial honor, integrity, and beauty. We pray particularly for those who have suffered in our suffering in Las Vegas. We pray your grace and mercy to surround them. We pray also that you would grant to these men and women on our city council grace to imitate the sacrificial life of Jesus, that they may lay aside their selfish desires in order to please you and to bless this community through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight, so we will have a presentation, Proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. And if we could have Bobby Gonder from the fire department come up and then I'm going to read this proclamation. And the proclamation states, whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority of all U.S. fire deaths; whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions; whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one or two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds; whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation; whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting; whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation; whereas the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education; whereas a 2017 Fire Home Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Therefore, I, Steve Widmire, Mayor of the City of Coeur d'Alene, dear, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through October 14th as Fire Prevention Week. So Bobby, I'll bring this down to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You saw the stats that has accumulated nationally throughout the United States on the amount of home fires we get and the amount of deaths. It's always been the fire services' goal is to reduce fire deaths. With the new lightweight-type construction, it's getting harder and harder. The time for escape is getting shorter. So we really push the home escape plan from every age group, from three years old up to 93 years old. For the National Fire Protection Agency, Fire Prevention Week is the second week of October. But here in Coeur d'Alene, we, the fire department, always runs the full fire protection month. What we've done so far, we were in Holy Family Catholic School last week doing a fire safety education talk with K through 4th grade emphasizing on the home escape plan. We handed them out the directions and had them take them home with their parents, their family, to fill it out and practice it. And we're recommending when you change your smoke detector batteries, go ahead and do your home escape plan drill, twice a month, keep it muscle memory. Throughout this whole month, we're going to be assisting with the school district 271's annual required fire drills with the full response from the fire department, making sure that we all are working together. It's one thing to have them just do their drill. It's another thing when they have fire apparatus along with it, which kind of is like a big magnet. So we've got to teach them, this is not the time to look at the apparatus. It's time to go to your assigned areas for accountability, so we know every person's been accounted for. We're constantly in the Head Start program over at Harding Center, monthly, teaching a fire safety education course. And we emphasize on the home escape plan with the three- to five-year-olds in that group. This month, we're also assisting, we're teaching assisted living facilities the home escape plan and fire extinguisher training with our new live-fire eco-friendly prop. It seems to be a big ticket for them. They like doing that. We will be doing a full training drill with a county building. I can't get too much more into that because if I do, the employees could figure it out. So it's got to stay kind of hushed right now. That'll be within the next week or so.
Can we start, can we guess?
Well, you can guess.
I think I know what it is. Can't do that to us.
Yeah. So we are diligent monthly, not just October, it just happens to be the highlight, Fire Prevention Week. But every month, we're doing things of this nature for our citizens and our valued guests to keep them safe in our city. And with this proclamation, that's going to, it's going to just show and help immensely. And the fire department thanks you very much.
Appreciate it, Bobby.
Thank you.
Woody has a question?
I have a question. When talking about lightweight materials, I don't think I've ever heard that before. So they're burning faster. Does that impact you guys on getting response times and effectiveness and things?
The response times are the same. What it is, is the detection of the fire, the activation of calling 911, and then from there on, it's the same. It's always been. It's just the material is burning so much faster because it's more lightweight. Instead of true dimensional wood, they're using much lighter type. Instead of nails, some of them are using glues that fail at a quicker rate, gusset plates that fail at a quicker rate. So our time, we don't really know how long the fire's been burning when we get the call. So when we get there, we do a very quick assessment and we hit it real hard. And number one is life safety. Our first thing, we do a coordinated attack, but we're in there looking for life.
Thanks.
Any questions for Bobby? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number 17-063.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Etinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. Now is the time for public comment. We have a couple of legislative hearings later on that people will be allowed to give public comment if they want to specifically comment on those items. But if anyone wishes to come and address the council on any general topic, can come on up.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mark Putty. I'm a Coeur d'Alene resident, landscape architect for Architects West, member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, and also an active bike commuter. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. We've turned in a permit for the bike corral west of our office on 210 Lakeside, and it's mostly because we need a bike rack. We have problems with no racks around our building, and so we brought them inside to store them. And then additionally, we've just oftentimes seen, since there is no racks available, they attach them to the trees, to the signs. You guys have seen that. We had come up, bike corrals had come up in the Bike Ped Committee, and we thought as a downtown business owner, it might be a good fit for us to be able to provide a bike corral for our own needs, but also for the community, whether it be through specific events, specifically since that, next to Hudson's, the front yard of our Sherman, say, oftentimes gets a lot of traffic. So we could see a lot of benefit from our proposed location for events, events as well as just everyday traffic. We think that there are, the ones that we've looked at and proposed are just a simple, functional solution, not really a bulky installation like we've seen probably perhaps in other locations. Furthermore, I think for us, you know, Architects West will buy it, store it, maintain it, install it, and give the opportunity for the community to use it. So I am here for justification for our bike corral.
Great. Well, I think Woody has a question.
Mark, I have a question for you guys, our architects. It seems to me we built our restaurant, we had to have a bike rack.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys get out of that somehow?
Probably because we just haven't, no, that's a good question, but there's a couple different, we haven't done much improvements lately. They would require a site plan review that might make us come back into compliance for adding a bike rack at the facility. I think you can, the racks are always encouraged, especially from, not a profession, but from just a bike commuter. I prefer to have ours, you know, in a seen location, which would be good. And just, the urban forester would love me if I told you that it's not great to be parking your bike up against trees, especially in downtown where they have a hard life anyways. We've talked about a couple different times, we do have close proximity with another bike corral. As a urban planner, landscape architect, the solution that we're providing, it provides entry to the bike corral from the street, where we encourage most bike riders to be entering the site from rather than bringing your bike onto the sidewalk where they're not really allowed. And, yeah.
So another, just to follow up on that, that area, you guys close at 5:00. Where I notice that most is when the eagles are pretty active and parking's at a premium in that area.
Right.
And it's okay to give up a parking place for bicycles, even though you guys aren't open after 5:00 when there's a lot of traffic down there. Do you follow my line of thinking?
A little bit. Our parking lot is open to the public after we close, so we've provided, you know, at least, there's probably 18 stalls in our lot that are available for public use. You know, that's, I see where you're coming from in one regard. I see pulling one stall for one person in one car, but I see providing 10 spots for 10 people on 10 bikes. So, I mean, in some ways, we've, if we're looking at it from a people perspective, we're actually facilitating the more people to come down.
Does that stay up all winter, also for the winter?
No. I think that, you know, just by virtue, you know, I'm kind of a curmudgeon bike commuter, so I'm pretty much the only one left at our office. So it's probably a seasonal aspect from, you know, good weather, April to October. And they're fairly simple installation applications, so I think they're easily removable and, you know, transform back to a parking stall real quick.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Amy.
Mark, who would be responsible for the setup and removal and storage of that?
That's, that would be us. Yeah. And we were, we were prepared to do that anyways because we're going to buy one anyways. So we just, and we have storage off-site, not on our building.
Dan.
Just wanted, we've touched on this at a couple of different meetings, and I came by and I saw you this, this week and wanted to, just as far as the timing, because part of the plan is to look at the whole downtown kind of picture and also some parking spots that ideally would make better sense as a bike corral than a kind of a jammed-in car spot. So I guess bottom line, are you still of the mind that if you can't do it until spring, that's going to be okay because we're almost up at the winter?
Yeah, certainly as a, as an active bike commuter, I'd say, give it to me now. As a landscape architect and planner who understands the value of foresight in planning, I say, okay, fine, you know. But just from a lead time, I don't think the rack itself has a huge lead time. So, you know, if it hit the ground running in April, you know, some good weather time, back to your question, then we could, you know, I think that's fine, too.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As long as we're discussing this issue, this is our first agenda item, too, and so I might as well just say what my thoughts were, Public Works as well as here, which was, I didn't really object to it, thought it was cool. You know, I would not take a bike downtown. I don't think downtown's bike-friendly, but I know what you mean about parking because I do lash my bike to a tree if I, if I have to. But we have, on the other hand, we have a parking issue downtown. We did a study, and this is the map that shows the lots that have a surplus or a deficit, and your lot shows a deficit. It's not the worst, but the one to north of you has a deficit of 114 parking spaces. And so what I said was, what we need to do is some overall policy so that businesses like you that volunteer to come in and put a bike corral can go ahead and do it, and it fits into a plan.
Sure.
Because right now, if we just do it, we're going to do it, someone else is going to come up and say, well, we want a bike corral because we have a lot of bikers. And, and it's just going to kind of grow out of, out of control when we know we have to deal with a parking problem downtown. We're, we're forcing Urban Renewal to pay a few million dollars for a parking garage to alleviate that problem. So it seems that would be, without a plan in place, it would be counterproductive to start putting in bike corrals and not really having like a master approach.
Just for clarification, a parking plan or a bike corral plan?
Bike corral plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then another question, how many bike parking stalls are in the new parking structure downtown? Do you guys know?
15. I don't know that. I just said that number because...
No, and certainly, I think I get exactly...
Someone's in the back who can, you can bug about that.
Yeah, no, I certainly get where you're coming from. And like I said, from a planning perspective, I think, you know, as not necessarily a landscape architect anymore, as a person on the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, I think that's a perfect thing to kick their way and we can start looking at a plan. And if I hurry it up and get it going, then maybe by April, good weather time, we might be able to have something we can run with and address, you know, certainly the issues you're talking about.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment, come on up.
Hi, I am Jessica Bryant. I'm a member of the Tubbs Hill Foundation Board of Directors, and I am here on their request to sincerely thank Mayor Widmire, the city council, and Ignite CDA for your willingness to seek alternatives that will allow for further protection of Tubbs Hill. We know it's not always easy or popular to make decisions for long-term value in the face of short-term gain. In choosing to seek and pursue options that might allow the property adjacent to Tubbs Hill and McEwan Park to belong to the city, you're taking advantage of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to further benefit both of these city parks and what they offer to the public. So we greatly appreciate your forethought and efforts, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up to give public comment? We will then move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? No announcements. Move on to Public Works, and we have the approval of the purchase and installation of a bike corral with, in the right-of-way by Architects West, and Monty McCully is going to give us a report.
Good evening. Looks like you guys have already discussed almost everything I want to talk about. I'll just throw up a map here real quick to kind of show you what we're talking about. So as most of you know, a bike corral is a large semi-movable bike rack that holds up to 10 or more bikes that take the place of a single car spot. We did a pilot project a couple of years ago where we had a local bike enthusiast purchase or pay for NIC to build a couple of these bike corrals. They ended up a little bit bigger than we liked, a little heavier. The city took on that responsibility, the Parks Department, to store them in the winter and move them and bring them back out and to find a home for them. Moving forward, we've had a couple different people interested in it. We've had Unchained Tap House actually purchase and install a bike corral. We've had a couple of the businesses show interest, but we didn't really have a process in place, so we have to bring it forward to you guys every single time one comes out. So the Ped Bike Committee thought it would be a good idea to come up with a plan, and I've developed a permit process that I'll be bringing forward this winter that would allow a predetermined set of locations downtown be decided ahead of time between myself, the Parking Commission, and the Downtown Association. We come up with a plan and then present it to you guys, saying, this is where we think potential future bike corrals could go if somebody wants to buy them and put them in. Anything outside the downtown core would be base, you know, on first, on a case-by-case basis, we'd decide, and we'd probably at that point roll it into staff decisions. We'll have to keep coming, bugging you guys about it once it's already decided. So we've already, you guys have already spoken with Mark about their particular bike corral. He did mention that he would wait for spring if he had to, and I see some wisdom in that. I could say that, or argue that both the Downtown Association and the Parking Commission has already agreed to the spot, so it would be incorporated into a master plan, but I'll leave that decision up to you guys. If you have anything further you'd like to ask of me, I can answer that.
Questions for Monty?
So Monty, when you brought this to Public Works, we kind of took you down this path of the projecting out and the bigger picture, and it was just kind of reminding me of when you said, well, we don't have to keep coming back to you guys. I seem to remember us having to do something for taxis. We went through all this stuff to get a taxi stand and then really didn't work out so well. The taxi guys didn't want to wait on their taxis, but we gave up a parking place for it. I think that's more of how I'm picturing what Mr. Gookin is projecting. It sounds like you've got all the parts and pieces together, and I agree with where they need to be right now. But then, as you said, as it starts expanding and everybody wants one, what's the criteria? So I got the feeling that you were okay with that. Are you still somewhat willing to put the work into figuring all that out?
Yes, that's no problem. So originally, this was going to be the master plan that you see here in front of you. Once I took it to the Parking Commission, they, they came up with some different ideas. They said, why don't we shrink the bike corral from being 20 feet long to around 10 feet? Maybe put a few less bikes in them, but we could put them in places like in front of Architects West where there's a bulb out, and that particular intersection is pretty dangerous. Cars parked all the way up, all four ways, it's hard to cross right there. And you put a bike corral in, it pulls cars back 10 feet, and you can see that vision triangle quite a bit better. They also spoke of, the mouse is going by itself, they also spoke of maybe locations near alleyways where people are parking and pushing on that alley so delivery trucks can't pull into the alleys, and they end up blocking the road. So I will get with them to come up with this master bike corral plan. And so just because it's on a plan doesn't mean it's going to be there. We have to have, people want these bike corrals, and we've only had a couple so far. I don't, I don't see it being an overwhelming thing, but you never know in the future.
Kiki.
Monty, I, I looked at this and talked to a couple of people, and actually I drove up Second Street. It's one of my thoroughfares for my daily commute. And so this particular location, I don't think improves the view corridor at all. If you're looking to the right for traffic oncoming and yielding to the right, you would have to go all the way into the intersection, way past the bike parking to even see up that side of the street. So it got me thinking that I'd like to see some ped bike people. What I'd really like to see is that this needs a little more time to cook. I think you need to get some bed, ped bike people, the property owners involved who might want one, identify some places that they could be beneficial to delivery trucks, to pedestrians, and then come up with just a well, more informed policy before we move forward with granting requests for locating these. I also think that the business owners need to be informed that this is happening. There may be a lot of folks who have a good idea about where one of those should be and the property owners, too. So I just feel like this needs some more work, and if it doesn't pop out till spring, there's maybe a chance for more folks to weigh in.
Other questions for Monty? Okay. Dan?
Well, I was ready to make a motion.
Okay, you go right ahead.
Do you, did you have a question, Ron?
Yeah. Monty, now, you said that from April to October, so that the bike racks would be moved during the winter months.
That's for snow plowing. So we don't block them in or break them, or, we need to store snow in some of those places.
Okay. Now, this was brought before the Public Works Committee?
Mm-hmm.
How did the Public Works Committee, what'd they decide?
They decided to forward it on to council for their overall decision, even though two of them didn't agree with it. They thought we should wait and plan it out with a master plan first.
Okay. Thank you.
Amy, did you have something?
I just have one more thing to keep in mind as we move forward, and I definitely agree with the master plan moving forward, and I know Bike Ped Committee would be up to working on that. But also to keep in mind the sidewalk safety there, because the bikes now that are being chained to trees and benches are a real impediment to our citizens moving up and down the sidewalks. And that is why I am such a fan of these bike corrals. They do, you know, encourage a healthy lifestyle and friendly environment in the downtown, but also increases safety on our sidewalks. So I just want to remind council of that.
Monty, how big is this one as compared to the one that's in front of Calypso?
So the one they're looking at, well, they haven't decided a particular one, but the ones I've sent them in pictures in our, in my mock permit, shows quite a bit smaller of a footprint. It's only five feet wide instead of six feet wide. It can be quite a bit smaller if we decide to go that route. And I think the Downtown Association would be a lot more comfortable with shorter bike corrals.
Sorry.
Oh, you did?
They're just a small half-size of, you know, a quarter size of what's out there. It's off the shelf, you just buy it off the shelf.
So they look like our temporary bike corrals that I made a few years ago.
All right. So if there are any other questions, we'd be looking for council action.
Okay. Well, I will still make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a bike corral within the right-of-way by Architects West. I agree with the wisdom of having a plan going forward, but I also think in the fairness to, you know, whatever due process we have now, we don't have much of a process, but they in good faith did what we have, and that doesn't mean we can't ratchet it down going forward. So I think, I would still support, and being on the Parking Commission where we did talk about this, and, and for, I have no doubt that they're going to take a look at the whole picture. But I think in this particular case, I still support giving them the approval for this one, and maybe they won't even put it in till the spring, but anyway, I'll see if I get a second this time. I didn't in Public Works.
Second.
So motion and a second?
It's a motion and a discussion at the same time.
Further discussion? Woody?
So with this, with this approval, this address, there's nothing about a steady parking plan or anything, right?
Not in this motion, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Jim?
Your Honor, the, at our last executive team meeting, they informed me that they are in the process of developing a policy overall for bike corrals. So that is already in the works.
This is the first time we've heard of it, right? Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Oh, maybe you do a roll call there, Renata, if you would, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
McEvers?
No.
Gookin?
Nope.
English?
Yes.
Etinger?
No.
So the motion fails. So what I would say, Monty, I don't think this necessarily means no, that we don't want a bike rack at Architect... want a bike rack at Architects West. And the good news is that we have time to study it between now and April, which is when they would probably desire to have it. So I would say, let's work on that plan and bring it back, and then we see if we can get something done by April.
And I think that I would also, at the same time, would like to bring forward the process that I've developed for, too, and the permit, so that might be a good time for that as well.
That'd be great.
So I want to thank the folks from Architects West, and I don't want them to think that's a no, that this isn't going to happen. It's just a, we're going to wait, do a little bit more work, and we're going to bring it back again. So, okay.
Thanks, Monty.
Thanks, Monty. So we will move on to other business, and this is a request for the city to be included as a joint applicant in the limited design PUD application for River Edge Apartments under municipal code 1707220. Mike Gridley has a report for us tonight.
Good evening. So to give a little background, this is kind of an unusual request. The property that it involves is the property here in the -- I'm waving around. That property is owned by River's Edge Properties, River's Edge Apartments. The property, just further context, this is the U.S. Bank property going west, Southeast Road, Mill River Development here, and then the Bad Axe property that the city is looking to acquire is here, and Riverstone, obviously, here. The city has a rule in its ordinances that if a property owner comes forward with a proposal or submittal for a limited or a planned unit development, they have to have all owners of property that are in that proposal sign off on the application. And the property, I'll show you the specific property. The property is this property, but drill into that a little bit. See if we can make that bigger. A little bit better. So that's a close-up of the property, and it depicts the city-owned property that runs through the middle of the River's Edge property. So River's Edge owns the big rectangle, Southeast Road here, and then the city owns this. And so River's Edge would like to submit a planned unit development proposal to the city, to the Planning Commission, for evaluation. In order for them to even submit it, they need to have all property owners, us, sign off on the application. It doesn't say that we endorse that proposal. We don't waive any right to, in the future, evaluate it or deny it if there's an appeal that comes to us. But it would allow them to go forward to the Planning Commission and let the Planning Commission evaluate the proposal on its merits. That's kind of it. Mr. Douglas is here in the audience, the owner, if you would like, have any questions for him. But that's what we've got.
So questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that I read in your staff report says that not only would we join them in the -- and I ask, correct me if I'm reading this wrong. So not only would we join them in a PUD, but we're also consenting to a special use permit application to increase the density from 17 units to 34 units per acre.
That's correct, and I should have added that. So again, it's both those requirements or ordinances require that all the property owners sign off on the application. Again, it doesn't say that we agree, endorse. It's just that, okay, we'll let the application go forward.
So we could approve this tonight, and then it comes back to us, and we could say, "No, because we don't want to increase the density"?
It would go to Planning Commission, and they would evaluate it. And if they approved it, somebody could appeal it to this body for review. At the same time, you retain ownership, city retains ownership of that railroad right-of-way. So anything that's done with that property would need the consent of the city council.
And here's a question that maybe Mr. Douglas can answer this, which is, so we own this lightning bolt through the middle of that property. What do we get?
Well, one of the discussions that we've had over a period of time is that the development that would occur on this property, in exchange for letting River's Edge use the railroad property owned by the city, the city would be given the right to use the waterfront, or a waterfront parkway would be developed along here. So that's one of the details that would be discussed with Planning Commission about what makes sense going forward with that idea. So today, if the question is, what do we get today? Today, all we get is this is allowed to go to the Planning Commission, and they get a chance to take a look at it.
And so there would be plenty of opportunity for the public to weigh in on this?
Yes, sir. There would be public hearings, just like, yes, and the whole process. And ultimately, if there was an appeal, if someone didn't like what the Planning Commission, after they reviewed it, scrubbed it, and they could deny whatever proposal, but if they approved it, that would be subject to appeal to city council.
What are the legal obligations for the city for going into this joint agreement? If, say, something happens on the property to someone, and it's not necessarily on our property, do we have any legal exposure?
No. All we're doing is signing off on their application, saying they would like to go forward with this. So I'm trying to think of another analogy to something where it's really a pro forma, you just sign off on it, you're not endorsing it, you're not taking on responsibility or any obligations by doing that.
Kind of like the dog riding in the car.
The dog riding in the car?
Dog doesn't tell you where to go.
Trick question.
Woody?
So go back through this appeal. So we say we sign off on this, it goes to planning, they dicker around with it, come up with something, and then you said it would, we will not see it again unless it's appealed. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on what the Planning Commission does with it. One of the conditions that's been discussed with the applicant and with staff, and certainly will be discussed with Planning Commission, is we have an existing annexation agreement that has certain requirements for the applicant-owner to do. That's going to need to be amended for this project to go forward. And so one of the things, the conditions we've discussed that would be likely included in any approval from the Planning Commission would be a condition that a new annexation agreement be negotiated with the City of Corlaine. That totally has to be approved by you.
But you were saying that for it to be appealed, someone needs to appeal it, and it's not us, because it's going to come to us if it's appealed?
Well, us, meaning you guys, that doesn't mean that staff or somebody, I mean, if the decision is to present something, the Planning Commission operates on their own. They can make a decision. We disagree with it and appeal to you. You can either agree with it, disagree with it, modify it, until there's a process.
So it's not like Dan could appeal it?
No, because he's going to be one of the judges on the appeal.
Can we make it a condition that it's automatically appealed?
A condition to the approval, I guess I'm not.
So if a PUD goes to the Planning Commission on this project, can we make it a condition on this agreement that that PUD is automatically appealed to council?
I don't think that, I don't think you can do that. This is a very unusual, I'll agree, this is unusual. I don't think we've ever been asked to join in something like this, so it's unusual. But I think there are backstops and protections as you go forward that ultimately council will have the last say on this. And your Planning Commission is going to, as they do with all projects, take a look at it and see if it makes sense, condition it if appropriate, and look out for the public's interest.
Other questions for Mike? Kiki?
Mike, just to be clear, if council agrees to accept this application, and what we're doing is consenting to the special use permit application jointly, then...
It's giving us authority, probably have Mr. Hammond or the mayor sign off on the application for the City of Corlaine. It's not an approval.
It's just an application. So design review, or, I'm sorry, Planning Commission could go and not approve the change from 17 to 34.
Sure, sure.
Is it possible for this body to separate those two pieces in this particular motion? If they felt like it? Is it possible to approve moving forward as the co-owner to the PUD, but not consent to the special use permit to change the units breaker from 17 to 34?
You could certainly do that. I think the project that the applicant is bringing forward, or would like to bring forward for evaluation, it requires both those applications to go forward.
Other questions for Mike?
Just a thought. So I think what we're stumbling over is, it seems, and again, we haven't seen anything, so it's going from 17 to 34, it's doubling the original plan, I guess, or the original...
Zoning.
Zoning. So I think that's where some of us are kind of going, "Oh, we don't know what that looks like." Not that it can't be, but it seems so extreme to be doubling the zoning, and that's where I'm feeling a little twitchy. Twitchy.
But again, to be clear, you're not doing that tonight. All you're saying is, "All right, fella, you can go through the wickets to try and get this approved." Planning Commission may say no. They may condition, they may say, "Well, we'll go to, you know, some increased density, but not R34." They may, you've been on Planning Commission, you know, they can condition things.
It just does feel like it gives it an appearance of, that the two go together, and that it's not, there's some sort of acceptance in the application portion, so.
No, I don't.
That was my line of questioning, to say, why would they, why is that piece even involved?
Yeah.
But if the owner has to have consent to the special use application, as well as consent to the PUD application, then...
That's what he needs, and then he will have to get approval. I mean, so the application goes in, and the proposal will be explained to Planning Commission, and ultimately possibly to you. But it will have to be approved, the application approved, not just consented to. And I think we've made a record tonight that we are not approving this plan, whatever it is. We are just consenting to an application coming into the city and being processed, as we would.
It just puts the full burden of that piece of it on the Planning Commission, because it couldn't be appealed by us as the property owner, the joint property owner. So since it couldn't be appealed by us, then it puts the full burden of the decision on them. So I just am wanting to be sure I have that right.
It can be appealed by us if it's denied.
So Mike, if we're a co-applicant, this comes forward to the Planning Commission, they deny it, it's appealed, the denial is appealed, this body then judges that appeal of the denial. So they would be judging the appeal of a denial of something that they are a co-applicant in.
We all have to recuse ourselves.
So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to follow, I'm trying to follow that circle.
Yeah, but it's clear, all you're doing is signing off on the application. You're not submitting a plan, you're not endorsing the plan, so it comes to you for approval. You know, unless you've made up your mind before it comes to you on appeal, and you say, "Look, I can't be fair, I can't listen to this and make an impartial decision," you get, there's nothing that would disqualify you from sitting as the ultimate judge on this. And it's reiterated in the letter, if you read the letter attached by the applicant's lawyer, that we are waiving no rights, taking on no responsibilities that we don't have already in handling a submittal like this.
Could Mr. Douglas move forward on the application on his own? Say if they, if council decides not to be a joint applicant, he still could move forward on the application by himself, right?
No.
He can?
No, it has to be all owners of the property within a PUD. And so he could move forward, you know, it's two parcels. There's a bigger northern parcel, and then a southern parcel. These have already been annexed, they've been platted. I think this has 21, 22 waterfront lots. He could go down and start essentially building those, selling those and building those now. Here, he could submit a PUD for this property, and this property's probably big enough, it's bigger than an acre and a half. So he could submit PUDs for these two on his own, without the property owned by the city that bisects the plan that he is bringing forward.
Any other questions from council? Ron?
Yeah, Mike, I think you, somebody asked you this before, but I want to hear again. What do we get? What does the city get? And the citizens of Corlaine get with an agreement like this?
At this stage of the game, all you get is the opportunity for an adjoining neighbor property owner to bring his property forward through the Planning Commission and city process. And possibly, through that process, get parkland, open space, waterfront trail, things like that that are being discussed. But right now, today, you don't get anything. The applicant, all the applicant gets is to take the next step and submit a plan. Right now, he can't even submit that plan, because all the owners of the property within the PUD have not consented to the application. So today, we're just giving, letting a neighbor go forward, so I can't tell you we're getting anything today.
Is there any way that we can request certain things?
For example?
My pardon?
For example, I mean, we have an annexation agreement that requires a number of things for this property. I think the new owner would like to do something somewhat different. That will have to be evaluated and approved or denied at the Planning Commission. But a lot of the things that are in the original annexation agreement will be incorporated into anything that goes forward, including a trail, including complying with our open space requirements, view corridors, some of the things that are in there. It's a very unusual situation, and we're just, I think, trying to get it unstuck.
Jim, did you have some...
Your honor and council, I think that the confusion is that you're kind of moving to the next step. And the next step is, if you allow this to move forward, that's the step where staff begins to work with the owner of that property in terms of, okay, how do we work jointly to make this beneficial to the city as well as to you? Because a PUD is give and take. It allows some different configurations that might not otherwise be allowed within the zone. But at this point, all we're doing is saying, all we're asking you to do is say, "Let's allow him, the developer, the owner, to move forward to P and Z and submit his proposal." And that proposal will then also come forward with staff recommendations in terms of answering the questions of, "What do we get out of this?" So that's the next step. But that step can't occur unless we allow the owner of that property to begin the process. And that's all you're doing right now, is you may begin the process that we, as a city, require any owner of property that wants to develop, this... develop. This is the process we expect you to use if you want to do this development under a PUD. And so, we need to look at that, not as if you've lost or anything to gain. At this point, it's just looking at it, you're not committing to anything, but you're allowing him to take a proposal to the Planning Commission that also includes our property. And like I said, there will be proposals from the owner, and there will also be proposals from the planning staff as to how this ought to move forward.
Dan?
So, and the reason you say this is unusual, it's because it's our rules that are...
Well, it's our rules. The rules are the same for everybody.
Right.
It's unusual, because we've got a big piece of property right to the middle of it.
In the middle. And I'm, I think I'm...
And at the end of the day, you own that property. So, even if everything's approved, and they say, "Okay, we want to do this," and you say, "No, our property isn't..."
So, I think I'm hearing that you're comfortable that we have safety nets, that we're not yet predetermining something. So, yeah, I think I'd kind of like to see what's there.
No, I think Jim was accurate in the way he characterized it. This is the first step, commit you or anybody else, but it allows the next step to take place, which is the review of an actual project proposal negotiation.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the endgame here that we, we wanted when we bought that thing was trail connectivity and waterfront. And we got that message loud and clear. Right now, I feel like we're being backed up against a wall. This is a kind of our only option, but it's not, is it? I mean, there's other things we could do with this property and with this property owner. And we could do, you've discussed before, a land swap, for example. And I think that that's, that's been batted around in planning a few times. It's like, you know, "We'll give you this for that. We could do that." There's probably other things that we could do. I mean, a whole gamut of things. So, I just wanted to share with council that I, I think we're being pushed up against a wall here, and that's not the case. This is just one option, and we can let it go.
Yeah, I mean, you own that big lightning rod through the middle. You can put a trail on it. The existing annexation agreement requires a trail to be constructed, but not on the waterfront. And again, what is already approved and could be built, and not shown on here, but are lots, wall-to-wall lots along this waterfront. And so, that's certainly going to be a discussion point, and has been in the past, that what can we do to exchange to try and develop waterfront green space along that Spokane River?
And, and we probably should have thought of that. I mean, I know we have that annexation agreement, but when we zoned the thing with a bank, I think that's R-8, is it R-8, Hillary?
I think so.
Yeah, it's R-8 along there, which means by right, right now, he can put in those waterfront homes, just like you said. And the commercial property can be developed commercial. And then, we, we sit in the middle, and that's what we're stuck with. But I'd like to see more things going on. I'm just not sure if this is what I want to see.
Any other questions? So, if there's no other questions, Amy, Jeff, something?
Yeah, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around the increase in density, the seventeen to thirty-four, along with the application agreement. Could we move forward? Sorry, go ahead.
Both those, under our rules, require the property owners to consent to it, because part of our property would be inside where the density would be increased. And so, again, you're not approving that density increase. All you're saying is, "Okay, go forth, give it a try, submit your proposal, sell it to the Planning Commission." But the, the two really go hand in glove, and they're, they're a, they're two separate rules requiring, our rules that require all owners to sign off on an application.
Woody?
I'm just going to make a motion. This is, this week, go round and round and round on this. So, I'm going to move to approve the request for the city to be included in a joint application for a limited design PUD application for Rivers Edge Apartments under MC 17 dot zero seven dot two two zero.
And that should, well, the other part of that would be under consent to the special use permit application.
Sure is that?
That should be in the motion, but that's the intent, was basically to give the city staff authority to go forward, to sign off on the application for the PUD, and the application for the special use permit to increase the density.
So moved, included. Second?
So, a motion, and a second, further discussion. Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I will be opposing this, because I don't like the increase in density. And further, I think the PUD process is, I'm not happy with it. I just had an example of people calling us, calling me regarding the Forest Service Nursery PUD, which, of course, in the annexation agreement, we wanted a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, but the PUD overruled that, and it was not appealed to us, so we never heard about it again. And this is the hang-up I have, is we're talking about totally surrendering all of our power right now to the Planning Commission for them to make the decision, and if no one appeals it, we'll not see it again. So, I have to oppose this.
Any other discussion? Kiki?
I kind of feel like, as I said, there's a huge burden on the Planning Commission once we approve this. And I think if it wasn't for that request of the increase of density, I might feel better about it. But I'm uncomfortable, too, with the inability to revisit this. I'd like to figure out a way to get it unstuck and move forward. I'm, I'm not sure that with that increase request being attached to it, that this is the way.
So, I have a question for Mike. If denied, what is the next steps for the property owner?
Well, the property owner would need to figure out something else to submit. Again, they could submit a PUD application for the separate parcels. They could go forward developing the property as approved already. They could come back next week and ask you to do it again. There's nothing that would prevent them from making that request.
Ron?
Yeah, Mike, what, what Dan said, is that right? I mean, I don't like the idea either of the increasing density. And I would like to have, I would like to see that the city has more of a say, because I know there's people out there that would like to have, say, the beach area, and, you know, that'd be city. But what Dan has said, is, is he correct in...
I think he was perhaps a little strident in the way he put that, because it will come back to you. It will, it can come back to you. And I, I would suspect there's one citizen at least...
It will or it can, which?
It can. So, if no, if Planning Commission goes off the rails and approves something that the community totally hates and doesn't support what you guys believe in, I got to believe somebody will appeal that. I can't guarantee it.
You got to believe somebody will appeal it. You got, somebody...
It gets to you. It also gets, it also gets to, you own the property. The property cannot go forward till the owner of this property ultimately says, "Yeah, we got a deal. Yeah, you're doing what we want. Yeah, here's our property, you can use it." I'm assuming you're not going to agree to that until you get something in return that's of value to the community. So...
I'd, I'd like to know right now what we, we, the council and the citizens of Coeur d'Alene are going to get for us saying yes. I'd like, I'd like to know that right now. I don't want to wait three, four months.
And I think what you get, again, you get it unstuck, and what you get is an opportunity. You get an opportunity to negotiate with your neighbor property owner on working out a deal where you get what you want, and he gets what he wants. So, at the end of the day, it can all be denied. Planning Commission say, "No, that's not something we want to do," or "He does not agree to what we propose." So, I think what you get now is just an opportunity to go forward and get what you want.
Hypothetically, Mike, this thing goes to planning, PUD...
You would like to make some...
Interrupt me, go ahead. So, this thing goes to PUD, there's no appeal, so it doesn't come back to us. If there's no appeal, it doesn't come back to us.
It will come back to you by necessity to amend the annexation agreement.
So, the PUD doesn't come back to us, but the annexation agreement comes back to us.
Right. And then, you, as the property owner, are going to have an ultimate say. If he wants to use one square inch of your property, he's going to have to come back and have a deal approved by city council.
Not the PUD, though.
No.
So, all we see is the annexation agreement.
Annexation agreement, and any appeal of the PUD that would...
I'm just saying, if the PUD is not appealed, you're saying the annexation agreement comes back to us, but not the PUD.
Right.
And I know, from dealing with the people next to the Forest Service Nursery, the annexation agreement said one thing, and the PUD overruled it, which is why it didn't come back to us, which is why we didn't say, "Hang on, we wanted a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer." PUD said sixty-foot. PUD ruled the day. But we never got that information, because we don't look at PUDs. And that's my concern. And that's why I can't just say to, "Yeah, Planning Commission, go ahead, make that decision, because I don't want to see it again." That's too important to me.
Woody?
A quick thought here. So, if this gets denied, and, and Mr. Douglas wants to go on with what he already has, how does he get across our dirt?
There is a public crossing easement that is in this vicinity here. It was granted years ago.
So, there is a way across?
Yes.
So, he can still go through and build and everything, correct?
Yes. Mayor Whitmer, I don't know if council would like to hear from...
Well, I, I think we have, we have a motion on the floor right now. We should probably vote on that if there are no other questions. So, with the motion on the floor, motion by Woody, seconded by Dan English, was to approve this request, and...
I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Yes, yes. So, roll call.
Miller?
God, I hate being first. Sorry.
Stain.
Yeah, can I?
What's the other, what's the other one Ron used a while back?
I'm waiting for a conflict. I can't use the "I don't care," because I haven't been on council long enough.
That was "I don't care," yeah.
I feel like I, I have to consider this so carefully. I want this to be unstuck, and I understand as property owners, we, we are the only ones who can help the progress in un-sticking. And I'm looking at the downside risk of not being able to acquire waterfront access for the public, in the fact that the PUD may possibly not be heard. I know we're not supposed to be in discussion.
From the heart, that's okay.
I, I guess I'm going to have to go with my heart, and hope that our Planning Commission and our citizens are going to be diligent and paying attention to this, and I will approve it.
So, that would be a yes from you, correct?
A long yes.
Okay, okay.
Heartfelt yes.
McEvers?
A heartfelt yes.
Kukin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
No.
Evans?
No.
Mayor?
This needs some more work. I'm going to vote no. So, we will move on to Resolution Number seventeen dash zero six four, Approval of the Agreements with the heirs of Thomas T. and Lola P. Curl for Waiver of Inheritance and Release of Reversionary Interest as Part of the Memorial Park Real Property Exchange with Ignite CDA. Mike?
So, this is another interesting, somewhat unique, that Bill Greenwood is going to speak to you about later, and there'll be a public hearing to evaluate the appropriateness of this exchange of property. But the, the city, back in nineteen twenty-three, received a donation from the Curl family, Thomas and Lola Curl. And what they received was this corner of City Park here. This is Garden Avenue used to be, and this is Park, I guess. And the proposal is, or, when it was gifted to the city, they said, "We'll give it to you for use as tennis courts or park property." And we haven't found any evidence that they ever played tennis there, but who knows, they may have. But it has been part of the park, not really used, kind of off in a corner. The proposal would be that, or, and so that reversion, the, the deed from the Curls to the city said, "Here, if you use it for a tennis court, or if you don't use it for a tennis court or parkland, it will revert to the ownership of the donors, the Curls." Well, they've passed away, but their heirs retain that reversionary right. So, well, Bill is going to talk to you later, and council has endorsed in the past, is an exchange of this property with Ignite, for Ignite's property here. But if we do that, there's a reversionary, the reversion would kick in. And so, because if we stopped using it for park, or tennis, but park, it would revert to the heirs of the Curls. Well, the heirs, we've contacted the heirs of the Curls, and there's six of them alive. And they, none of them live in Coeur d'Alene. They, they're very excited about the, the improvements in the park, and they, so they, they've proposed a deal. They said, "We'll give up our right to get this property back, any reversionary interest, if the city would pay fifty thousand dollars to the Museum of North Idaho." And so, essentially, what they're giving up would be arguably their right to the lots, the property that would revert to them. If we make a donation to the Museum of North Idaho, Ignite, as part of the exchange, has proposed that they will reimburse us the fifty thousand dollars. But the Curls wanted it to come from the city in honor of Thomas and Lola Curl, the original donors. So, the net-net to us of approving, so what I'm asking you to do is approve us, the city, making this agreement with the Curls, that in exchange for their inheritance rights, we'll give fifty thousand dollars to the Museum of North Idaho, which will be reimbursed to us from Ignite.
Questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing that popped into my mind when I read this, Mike, was, why don't we just give them the fifty thousand dollars, and then they can give it to the Museum of North Idaho?
You know, that was the deal that was negotiated. It may have to do with, you have six heirs. They all live in a different place. They're a family. They're, I don't know what the dynamic or what the agreement is, but all I know is the agreement that was presented to me, or to us to document, was that we pay it in this manner. And maybe, I know the mayor's been deeply involved in the negotiation.
That was just the request from Margaret Gates, who was the spokesperson for the group, and she had just requested that, the payment be made directly from the city to them in honor of her grandparents. So, that was just honoring her, her request.
And how does that fit into city code? How can we pay money to a nonprofit?
How can we make, pay money to a nonprofit? Because we're getting the reversionary rights from the heirs that are worth that.
We're purchasing rights, basically.
Yeah.
But we're not purchasing them from the nonprofit.
No, but we're purchasing them from, we're purchasing it, as part of a three-way agreement, that, you know, "I'll pay your debt, or your, what you want me to, to, you know..."
Well, that always gets so messy, though, doesn't it?
Oh, that's why we have lawyers. It makes everything so easy and simple.
Second question. Where in Idaho Code does it allow an urban renewal agency to reimburse a municipality for a contribution to a nonprofit?
That's part of the consideration for the exchange of the property. So, there, Bill's going to talk to you about the exchange of our property for their property. So, they're saying, "We will give you our property and fifty thousand dollars."
I just, I think it would be a whole heck of a lot cleaner if we were just, and I wouldn't even object, if we... I wouldn't even object, if we paid him $50,000 to buy the rights back. I mean, to me, that seems just a lot cleaner, the whole mechanism. And I'm also very uncomfortable with donating to a nonprofit. I don't think we should be doing that. There's nothing against the museum, I've written checks to the museum, but it just seems like it's going to open the door potentially to someone else who may want to have us make a donation, perhaps not to as politically neutral a nonprofit, which could get us in trouble.
Well, that was really Margaret Gates's request.
And if she requested, we donate it to the NRA.
We would have probably said no.
Yeah, see?
But, you know, you could split it up. I think this is just a cleaner way to do it, really. Dan?
Well, it sounds like for the simplicity from the family's point of view, that works out, and it certainly is, from where I'm sitting, is in the community and the citizen's best interest. And I would also just go on the record, I see absolutely no problem with us donating to a nonprofit. There's lots of examples of where, I mean, government supports social service causes, but that's a discussion for a different day.
And we, the city supports the Museum of North Idaho now through having them use the building, city-owned building, so. Any other questions for Mike on that? So if no other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 17-064, Approving Agreements with the Heirs of Thomas T. and Lola B. Curl for a waiver of inheritance and release of revisionary interest as part of the Memorial Park Real Property Exchange with Ignite CDA.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think this is a feel-good thing. It feels good to me, anyway.
No, no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Nope.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Now we move on to our public hearings. These are legislative hearings where we will have a staff report, and then we will have time for public comment. So this first one is the intent to convey land via land trade involving Ignite CDA-owned property located on West Garden Avenue, tax ID 5539, for city-owned property located at the corner of West Garden Avenue and Park Drive, a portion of Lot 72 Sherman Park. And Bill Greenwood has a presentation for us.
Good evening. So we've spoken about this a few times, and this is what Mike was talking about. For some reason, I can't get that a little bit bigger, but this is a view of the park with these two parcels in question. The parcel that Mike was talking about, or this lot where the Curls were at, in exchange for, I'll show you in a moment, this triangular piece. And so this is the concept of the park that we're working on currently. So these are the two parcels. So for your consideration, what we're talking about this evening is to exchange this parcel with Ignite, I mean, this parcel with Ignite for our parcel here. And in that layout, you saw our pavilion, and our restroom facility is about in this vicinity here. And you've seen this before you, over the last 18 months, several times. And with that, I guess we'll look at public testimony about this consideration.
Any questions for Bill?
Dan? I just wanted to make a statement. Got a call this morning because there was an article in the paper, or maybe it was yesterday, I don't know. But the article kind of made it sound like this was Memorial Field being transferred, but it's not.
It's not.
It's this property.
No, it is not.
Okay. Just want to clear that up in case anyone's freaking out.
Is way over here. So we're talking about this little piece here, and as Mike mentioned, this is a part of the park that wasn't really used that much. We had some, right in this vicinity, we had a playground area with a swing set. Years ago, I had taken that out. There was a slab that used to be an old pavilion, but pretty much this was just an entrance in off Garden that was some space that the public didn't really use very often.
They were the last teeter-totters in Coeur d'Alene.
So no, Memorial Field is not being given away. Memorial Field is, was seeded with hydroseed last Thursday, and we're hoping to be playing on it sometime in late spring next year.
So any other questions for Bill? We may have you back up later, Bill, but thank you very much. Now we will open up the public testimony. Anyone that wishing to come up and speak on this shall have time to do so. Anyone wishing to give...
And I think there were some sign-up sheets in the back.
Some sign-up sheets in the back. So I have the sign-up sheets for this issue. I don't have anyone on the list, but want to give another opportunity of anyone wishing to give public testimony. Not seeing anyone. I will close public testimony and look for council action.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor, to authorize the city to enter into agreement with Ignite CDA to convey land via a land trade involving Ignite CDA-owned property on W., West, oh, so West Garden Avenue, which is tax ID 5539, for city-owned property located at the corner of West Garden Avenue and Park Drive, a portion of Lot 72, known as Sherman Park.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Wait, I, didn't this the piece you just voted against, Dan? Let me just, am I getting confused here?
Sorry, what?
Did you just vote against that on the last motion?
No, 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 that was the money transfer.
He didn't like the payment.
Yeah. I think we, I think we should have just given them the money.
Okay.
And I don't like, I don't like us entangling with nonprofits. Sorry, Dan.
Okay, gotcha. I just need to get my mind clear.
Any other discussion? So roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Bill. Now we will move on to the next legislative hearing. This is an intent to convey land via land trade involving Ignite CDA-owned property located on Young Avenue, south of City Hall, for city-owned property adjacent to Tilford Lane in Riverstone, and Monty has a report for us.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about a land trade between Ignite CDA and the city of Coeur d'Alene involving some property that both the city owns and Ignite owns along Tilford Lane, as well as property, oop, can't open it on this computer, as well as property that, on Tubbs Hill, to expand. Can't get on the internet here. Anyway, it's a property right here behind City Hall. We already own part of it. There's two lots that had, that had houses on it, perhaps four lots, that combined is, give us nearly the entire corner of Eighth and Young. So the trade involves 60 feet of right-of-way that the city owns, and the 60 feet of right-of-way, or property that Ignite owns. The Centennial Trail would have to be moved to the southwest, and it would join back up with the original alignment further down the trail. This parking lot is a conceptual drawing. These 17 lots would be the value that Ignite would get in exchange for this property.
So questions for Monty? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a quick review, Monty, this property, the, why did the city originally obtain it, and why did Ignite or LCDC originally obtain it?
Okay, so the, the city obtained the right-of-way on either side of the trail when we built the Prairie Trail and realigned this as the Centennial Trail. There was a trade between the railroad, Ignite, which was LCDC at that, back in those days, and the Trail Foundation. And so it, long story short, it all came back to the city eventually, and we got the trail. The 60 feet to the southwest of that was obtained when Ignite and the city both purchased the railroad right-of-way all the way down to Mill River. And so that's how they got that lower section.
So the purpose of the purchases was for the trail?
Right.
And, and we don't know, we have not been told why the property was purchased south of City Hall. We don't, there was never a, there was nothing in their plan that I had read, but is there anything you know about why that property was purchased?
Tubbs Hill?
Yeah.
Those two lots were private lots, slatted a long time ago for, for houses or whatever the zoning required. When those came up, I don't know why Ignite purchased them, except perhaps for this very purpose, to, to get them for the city or to get them to develop and, and make money for the district. When that happened, when the houses were torn down, it was spoken about, I believe, on social media, and the public came forward, very excited about retaining that property for the city, for the public to use, instead of having houses built. And so, in order to find a way to keep that in public property, the city got together with Ignite, and they looked at other potential land swaps, and they decided, hey, this would be a great way to keep that property for Tubbs Hill while still keeping our trail, just with a slightly different alignment.
Just as a point of clarification, it is public property now because it's owned by a public entity.
Tubbs Hill? Oh, yeah.
Property. Both, both properties are owned by public entities, so they're public property.
Right, well, Ignite could sell that property, though.
And we could sell our property.
Right.
So Monty, I have a question. Is, as far as the, the realignment of the trail, and you've obviously been down there a lot, is there an opportunity to make the trail better than it is now?
In a couple ways. Currently, the trail crosses Beebe Boulevard at an angle. The trail located to the southeast of Beebe is already in that same alignment that we're looking to move the trail to. So when it hits Beebe, you have to cross at a, at a pretty severe angle. It's not very safe when you're crossing going north, because you're, looking behind you is not as visible. So we'd like to have our alignment straight, put some high-visibility crosswalks there, and it'd probably be quite a bit safer for, for trail crossing. Also, the property to the south, that's also up for public sale. And when it gets developed in the future, it'd probably look a lot like what's being proposed here. So it would be very different from one side of the road to the other.
Okay, so in your opinion, there's an opportunity to make the trail better?
Right.
Than it is now, that, that section of trail?
Yeah.
Other questions for Monty?
I also should say that when I walked it the other day, it seemed like you had quite a bit better view of the river on the other side of that, of those trees, and the little hill that's there currently.
Council, have any other questions for Monty? Okay, we may have a few questions later. So we will open up the public testimony portion of this. And we, I'll go down the lineup list here, and we have Chet Gady, who wishes to speak. Come on up, Chet.
Good evening, Chet Gady. I live in Mill River. I'm glad to see you all in oversight mode, because I think we need some oversight. Remember back in 2014, when you're all excited about buying this railroad property, and we're going to use the railroad property for leverage and to get public lands? I think that's what you did tonight, previously with the other end of this property. I think the oversight needs to be continued on this end also. Back in 2014, my understanding was that the city was going to buy the railroad right-of-way or the railroad property that was out of the city, because Ignite could not. And Ignite was going to buy all of it that was in their districts, and then Ignite was going to give that right-of-way to the city, so that the city would have a linear park going the whole length of the river and be available for bicycle paths and other amenities. After the purchase, Ignite did give to the city all of the railroad property in Mill River that they bought. They turned around and said, see, this is the part of the deal. They have not given the park that is south of Riverstone. And I don't know when that deal changed, and I don't know when city council approved that change of a deal. And yet now we find Ignite looking at developing that property and not using it as a linear park, and not using it, and using it for development. Already, they have put in a parking lot right in here on their property, their property. How come it's not yours? I don't know. And down further, like in here, my understanding is they granted an easement to Mr. Douglas that may have been the final step that made his development of those houses, they're empty lots right now for sale, those houses along the river. And remember when we were purchasing this and when we talked to Planning, what we did not want was a row of houses along the river? Now, Mr. Douglas has all his permits and everything and that, but if Ignite is allowed to continue to develop this right-of-way, instead of giving it to the city, which I believe was the original intent, the lots beyond Mr. Douglas that are now still in the county, if they can include, just like they do here, the property that's owned by Ignite, we can see 10 more houses right along the river, and we will have Belle Reve West. So let me just try to summarize. Everyone gets looking here. I want you to look at me for a second. Okay, so the city has their 60 feet here, and on this 60-foot-wide piece, we already have, we have the Centennial Trail. Ignite has 60 feet here, which, when I did my map study over the weekend, turned out to be the Burlington Northern Railroad that was part of the railroad property that I believe was to be given to the city. So they are asking you to trade this property to join with this property that should be yours anyway, so that they can have some property over here. I think that's a pretty questionable deal. I believe on the sign-up sheet I put down, I was against and then maybe neutral. I think if you could decide to go forth with this, needs to be huge oversight. First, why isn't that right-of-way in the city right now? Why isn't all of that your property? And all of that your property, if you decide to want to trade it, that might be the best thing. I don't know. But right now, it's a very strange thing. There seems to be, on the county maps, a 15-foot right-of-way that is the current, and Monty, correct me if I'm wrong, that is basically the current alignment of the Centennial Trail that goes straight across Beebe. And it's 15-foot right-of-way, and it's to the south of all that purple stuff we're talking about, okay? And it continues on down right to Lance Douglas's property. And then it stops. So if we're going to let Ignite develop that property, and we cannot use it for continuity of a bicycle trail, if they're going to develop it, we have no other trail that goes beyond Mr. Douglas's property. We have no other right-of-way. So if we're going to do this, somehow in the deal, you've got to get the property further to the west. Otherwise, Ignite will turn around and sell it. Now, I'm a big fan of Ignite, and I'm a big fan of the city-Ignite partnership, but I think, like any partner, there has to be oversight by the other partner. And we need to take a look at this, think of it, and if you're going to say, go forward with this, put sideboards on it so we understand why that whole thing isn't the city's, what their plans are further down. Are they going to sell it? Are they going to develop it? When the city and Ignite originally deal for the railroad right-of-way, was it goes to the city? And Councilman Gookin, I loved your comments about annexation agreements sort of disappearing. The annexation agreement for Mill River would have had a bicycle path already built there for you. But they get lost. It's not evil doings. They get lost because of no oversight. So you guys are the oversight guys, and tonight it was exciting to watch you say, we're scared to give our oversight away. We want to do it. So I'm asking you to do your oversight on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet. Move on to Jessica Bryant? Jessica, you already, you had already had your public comment earlier? Okay, so now we'll go to Doug Eastwood.
Name sounds familiar.
Well, you think that sounds familiar. I was sitting back there thinking about a fellow named Mr.
I was sitting back there thinking about a fellow named Mr. Edinger with 40-some years of meetings under his belt, and how many times have you been in this chamber, had a meeting with the city council, with the planning and zoning, with general services and public works and Parks and Recreation? You should get that out. That'd be a phenomenal statistic that everybody would just be gasping about, frankly. And before I get started, before, oh, you already set the clock. I mean, I was going to give you a couple of freebies.
Got the history lesson.
So I'm going to give you a couple of freebies, anyway. These are kudos to you folks. Again, sitting back here in the audience and just looking around, this building looks as great as it did the day when it first opened, so that is really a testament to you folks and your staff for keeping up a really, really good facility. Nice job.
That's Betty. She gets all the credit for that.
Well, it's Betty and probably a guy named Howard and Bill and Jay and a few others that have really kept this up. It is absolutely gorgeous. And I wanted, I know you've been congratulated on this, I just wanted to throw my two cents in, but congratulations on your decision to move forward on the Stimson and Atlas property. I think you're going to have a lot of fun with that, and you're, you're all going to be in the historical archives of the city of Coeur d'Alene for that one. That'll be great. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I am here representing the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation on the proposed land trade involving the property south of, south of and along Tilford Lane in the Riverstone subdivision, the one that's up here on your screen. Little bit of history, the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation was formed in 1991 as a result of the state's 100th year of statehood. The development of the Centennial Trail may have been the largest and most significant lasting legacy in the state and has grown exponentially in use and has been part of multiple trail expansion projects. The foundation's mission statement is to preserve and develop the North Idaho Centennial Trail system and promote non-motorized connectivity throughout North Idaho. Foundation has over 200 members and upwards of 2,000 followers on Facebook, and that generates a lot of questions. When we were first made aware of this land trade, the reaction was mixed and emotional. As you are aware, any proposed change creates a lot of questions, often more questions than answers. Change takes people out of their comfort zone and can be viewed as a taking of something people do not want to give up. In this case, there were several things that the foundation members viewed as too dramatic of a change, and they were initially opposed to the idea. First thing that got our attention was the proposed reduction of the trail width from 15 feet to 12 feet. To a non-user, that does not seem like much of a sacrifice. However, the proposed trail profile also identified a retaining wall on the north side of the relocated trail. This retaining wall creates a shy distance from the edge of the trail to where the trail user, particularly bicyclist, would actually be riding. That shy distance is about three feet. So if you could imagine riding down the trail and there's a wall that is right alongside of you, you're not going to be using that area within two or three feet of that wall. So your knees, your feet, particularly your handlebars, don't come in contact with it. So when we look at that, we had a 15-foot trail that a profile shows could potentially be reduced to 12 feet with a north-side shy distance of another three. The trail in that 1,000-foot area is now reduced to a usable nine-foot trail system. And there was no way we could quietly accept or embrace that change. A 15-foot wide trail can be included if this land swap comes to fruition. Due to the elevation change between the two railroad right-of-ways, a retaining wall may be necessary. However, its location is still a concern, and that detail will have to be vetted if the project moves forward. But it is doable. Just to the west of the proposed housing project, the trail is proposed to swing north to reconnect to the existing 15-foot trail. And that is, that is this S curve, if I can get this guy to cooperate with me, that is the S curve right there. This includes, this actually caused concern with the foundation members because this connection, that S, that S connection, shows a 5% grade change in the trail, where there is currently 2% grade change or less. 5% does not seem like much for a short distance, and it is the maximal, maximum allowable grade to meet ADA standards. However, your proposal shows the narrowing of a popular trail system and creating a greater grade than what all parties had agreed upon when the trail was initially developed. A 5% grade is not necessary and can be mitigated back to a 2% or less grade at that reconnection point. The transition does not have to be a short distance between the relocated trail and the existing trail. It can be elongated to the point that the 2% grade is achieved. Again, 5% meets the ADA standards, but we as planners, developers, et cetera, too often fail to put ourselves in the shoes or the wheelchair of those with disabilities, and a 5% grade becomes a challenge to a leisurely outing when it does not need to be, not need to occur on this trail. What I'm referencing here is this distance doesn't need to be that short, but elongated to where that 2% grade could be retained. An expanded parking lot at Riverview, at Riverstone Park is also proposed in this land trade. We like that. We would also like to see a connector out of the parking lot or into the parking lot on the south side of the new lot, allowing east and west trail users to move and access the lot without vehicle or trail user conflicts. That's right here. So a connector, just a short connector that comes out of the parking lot to the west and one that comes out of the east allows them to load and unload and get their equipment out onto the trail without having to deal with cars in the parking lot or trail users along this part of the trail where they're accessing the park out of the, out of the parking lot. Again, that's real easy, not, not something that should create any, any heartburn with regards to the development of that site. The Centennial Trail is a 23-mile linear park and the hub of numerous other trail connections and trailheads. Finding 23 miles of continuous trail connectivity was not an easy task, took years of planning and negotiating and some arguing. The Centennial Trail in the area we are now talking about was originally on Northwest Boulevard. It moved into the Riverstone and tied together with the Prairie Trail on the west side of the Riverstone complex. We were fortunate, when we sought to access the Riverstone area, that developer, John Stone, was a trail user and saw the benefits of this trail for his residents, businesses, and visitors. We have all seen this area build up with increased residents and new businesses year after year. That increase in people will continue, and that adds to the increased use of the trail. Reducing the size of the trail where use is ever increasing is a big step backwards for us, and the foundation members would likely dig their heels in, or in this case, their walking shoes or running shoes or bicycle cleats, and try to prevent that from happening where we have a reduced trail, greater grade, and not as good of access. Climbing to the 30,000-foot level, there is more to consider with this proposal. The Riverstone Development Master Plan is a work in progress, and as I mentioned earlier, we were fortunate to bring the trail through this area. However, when it was laid out, it was deemed temporary, not in the sense that it would go away, but it was highly likely it could be shifted one direction or another. We recognize that, and in all fairness, we accept that. The same holds true on the east side of Beebe Boulevard. The annexation agreement identifies that the Centennial Trail may be moved north to make way for single-family housing if that should be the goal of the developer. We recognize and accept that, but we cannot be given less than what we have, less than what the community has and what they have come to expect is theirs for their public outdoor recreation. And there is immeasurable value to that public outdoor recreation. We also recognize that any land trade can be a complex process with a myriad of details that have to be worked out. Those details will be left up to your staff, in your legal counsel, Ignite, and other private entities and individuals. In closing, and I see I'm almost out of time over here.
You're out of time.
We appreciate that you've met with us and Mayor, particularly you came to our meeting, you sat down with myself, your engineers, and Ignite came to one of our meetings, met with us and listened to our concerns, and assured us that the end result, if this project goes forward, is that we will have equal or better than what we have now. Equal or better is a 15-foot wide trail, 2% or less grade change, and expanded parking with connectivity. We trust that will happen if you go forward in this land trade, with this land trade and housing development, and we trust you will work with the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation to that end. And it can all fit, but it's going to take some work. I'm all through. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
We'll give you your third five-minute portion of this, Doug. So we have questions for Doug.
Well, I will. Just because we have some history here, so I'm referring to the property south of City Hall. And if I recall, in the McEwen process, at one point, there was a plan for that. Do you remember what it was?
Yes. Yes and no, if I can, if I can use both of those. What they had originally done is, as Monty alluded to, Ignite had the opportunity to buy those homes, and they did. They didn't have a use plan at that time as to how they might be used. What you probably saw is something that myself and the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission had done, Scott Cranston, is we visited with Ignite at that time during one of their strategic sessions for the year ahead and their planning, and we had asked that that property be considered as part of the McEwen Expansion Project if necessary. What we had looked at, and particularly myself, was an expansion of a, of a subbuilding or something down here that would support the Parks Department for the long-term care of this site. So you may have seen that, never came to fruition, but that was just one of the ideas that was out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list, we have Terry Godbout.
Terry Godbout, Coeur d'Alene. I already sent a detailed email to councils. I just want to go over two quick things. For the life me, in 2017, when you, as part of this project, if you are going to cut down 800 feet of mature ponderosa trees right through here, 160 trees over 10 feet tall, and there's no mention of it in the presentation to Ignite or to council, that just, they disappeared, I guess. So that, that's a big deal. That tree line is a huge visual barrier between the commercial area in Riverstone and the homes down here, and it's, it's, it's a very nice effect because the trail is immediately adjacent to that tree line all the way through here. Let's see. Well, I can't remember what my other point was, but you got it in writing anyhow. I'm opposed to the trade. Thank you.
Those were the only folks that I had on the list. Suzie, you weren't on this list, but...
I forgot to sign up.
Oh, darn it. Well, I guess we'll just move on.
So, testimony's closed.
Let me keep on talking, I can tell.
Come on up.
Thank you. So, was that for it or against it?
I was against it because of the tree.
No, Godbout was against it.
Yeah.
What was Doug? What was he saying?
He just wanted you to accomplish these things. And the mayor's already got it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know what he was trying to tell us is everything he wanted incorporated, but does that mean he was...
If, yeah, if we do those things.
Get it without my glasses?
Good thing. Can I not wear glasses? And I barely read it myself. It's less than five minutes, so will you spare me the clock? It's really tacky and it's annoying. And I keep, it takes me off my, off my subject. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Nice vote to all of you who voted for the previous, the previous thing. And the mayor did the tie. Mr. Mayor, council, this issue is one of, sorry, my breathing's weird again. This issue is one of land trade, just a simple deal, one for another. However, you never know. Many residents were pleased when the railroad right-of-way, a narrow band of approximately plus or minus 60 feet was purchased. They were happy. I was. Public ownership that would provide, that would benefit the public via permanent open space, that would provide a myriad of uses benefiting the entire community. It now appears that the thought of permanent open space is not to be. Here comes LCDC Ignite, who plans to sell off part of the portion of the right-of-way for development. Scanning this issue was fairly basic, or I thought it was. The city would get properties south of City Hall. By the way, the assessor currently values those at $518,659. The LCDC, while the LCDC Ignite appraisal is one of $916,000. Quite a difference of values, I think. And LCDC's Ignite pro forma for the developments, develop site specifically excludes land, land cost, yet indicates a profit. It just doesn't seem to match up to me. The red flag for the citizens should be this, the issue of selling off decreasing publicly held open space. Best we pay attention to this. In the meeting where, and Monty McCully talked to you about putting this on the agenda tonight, he mentioned that this is a win-win proposition, and what I ask is, win-win for whom? Think about it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give testimony? If, are you on the list here? You're not on the list? Okay, come on up. We'll just get your name on here.
Barbara Haddon. I agree with Suzie, and I'm also concerned with the, the trees. I have ridden that trail many times, and I love that trail, and those trees are especially great. And also, I'm concerned with the width of the trail, riding a bike. I am a little nervous next to a wall, and so that's a big deal for me, too. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more person, I believe, wished to... There's one more person, I believe, wished to...
Well, I come to you today in support of the land exchange.
I'm sorry, can I catch your name first, please?
Patricia Anderson. I believe I'm on the list.
Oh, yeah, you just didn't mark whether you want to testify or not. My fault.
Oh, okay. Well, I am in support of the land exchange, and I'm here tonight to stand in front of you and urge you to join two other councils in the history of Coeur d'Alene in supporting acquiring any available property to add to Tubbs Hill. It's the crown jewel of your Parks Department, and it's very, very rare that there's an opportunity to add to that value. In 1936, the Coeur d'Alene Lumber Company went bankrupt, and the city council during that year purchased the property. It's now the north base of Tubbs Hill and McEwen Park. Moved forward another 37 years, and in 1973-74, another opportunity came up to acquire additional property. On the east side of Tubbs Hill, the Idaho Water Company decided to dispose of its property. The city council bought it, and it's now East Tubbs Hill Park. Later in 1974, 34 acres on the crown of the hill became available. A German investment corporation had planned to build condominiums, but that plan folded, and that council, again in 1974, purchased that property. And I thank you, Mr. Eddinger, for that vote. Forty-three years later, we come to tonight, and it's you. The property over there on East Young is probably the last parcel that's ever going to come up for sale, is ever going to come up to be able to be incorporated into the park. There really are no other pieces of property all the way around to the other side of the trail. So this is the last chance to add to the park, and it's a beautiful piece of property. And I know that there's probably a lot of interesting ideas in the citizens out there of what could be done to enhance that and incorporate it into both McEwen and Tubbs Hill, kind of as a combination of developed park and wilderness. I don't think there'll be any more chances to do this, so I appeal to you to join the other city councils in history and take this opportunity, and please, please, make this land exchange and add one last parcel to Tubbs Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public testimony? If not, I'll close the public testimony portion of that. Monty, could you come up for just a second? And you may have to ask Phil Boyd this question, but Doug made up the point of the 15-foot-wide trail and the 5% to 2%, is that something that's possible? Phil, maybe we'll, if you could come up...
You didn't mean city council? So the question that Doug had presented was, the trail width in this area here, if it can be 15 feet next to the retaining wall, we anticipate we can fit that in there without reducing the number of lots in here. The 2% grade versus the 5% grade, Monty and I have both looked at that area. Making it 2% would require you to extend the trail a very long distance, which obviously increases cost. Making it less than 5% is probably possible, it just becomes a cost factor.
So...
You throw enough money at it, and you can accomplish it.
But right now, it's house deep.
It varies along the trail. Monty probably knows that.
But it's not 5%. So basically, we don't spend anything, it doesn't change, there's no slope.
Further west, it's steeper.
Right. In that spot, it's no grade, but yeah.
So it doesn't cost us anything if we don't do the swap?
Well, yeah, it costs Ignite not getting made whole for their investment in Tubbs Hill.
We'll get to that in a second, we're talking about the slope.
Well, but no, you're saying that it didn't cost anything. Well, yeah, there is a cost.
Well, they bought the property.
There is a cost, yeah, so...
Woody. You just said you can do the trail. You said you can do 15 feet with a retaining wall.
Yes.
And I thought they were saying you don't want a retaining wall up against 15 feet because it shrinks down to three feet, right?
There's a shy distance associated with it.
Shy distance.
Yes, that you shy away from it, but it's not an uncommon configuration. If you think about the trail over next to where Southeast Wade departs from Northwest Boulevard, the highway put a retaining wall right along the trail there, so it's not an uncommon configuration.
And right here at McEwen, it's the same thing. But they were talking about a 12-foot trail next to a retaining wall. A 15-foot trail, you'd have that extra three feet in addition to your shy distance, so you'd have more room.
Okay, so you're including the shy distance?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up question on that. So the trail currently is 15 feet there?
Mm-hmm.
But with the retaining wall, then we have that three-feet shy distance, so essentially we're reducing it from 15 feet, excuse me, to 12 feet?
For bicycles, yeah.
Is there a way to make it 18 feet? So we don't...
No.
No, that's not possible.
You would essentially, well, you could do that, but you start reducing the number of lots, and the setbacks for the houses becomes problematic.
So 15 is the absolute widest you can go?
No, and part of the, just taking one step back, we're trying to, what's being discussed here is what we call design-level detail. What is, the point we're at in the process is the conceptual level. We haven't got into design-level detail, so when you start actually getting into design-level detail, I'll be the first one to try to make the trail as wide as we can get it, but there's trade-offs for that, how you set a house in there, how things, where water lines exist, all those things. And so Monty and I have looked at it, Bill Greenwood, met with Doug Eastwood, and our objective is, of course, make it as wide as we possibly can, including the shy distance. At this point, I anticipate we can get to 15. Going beyond that would be a challenge.
Woody. So along those same lines, so these lots are 120 feet deep. Is that correct?
The parcel is 120 feet deep.
Right.
The two parcels, yes.
So if you took off five feet and said, not 120 or 115, do your design in the 15, you got five feet to play with on the trail, right? Is my logic, my math? Okay.
There's, the parcels are 120 feet deep.
Correct.
The trail, if you take 15 feet out of there, now you have an effective parcel depth of 105 feet, because the trail sits within the 120 feet.
Oh, I thought it was on the outer edge.
No, it's within that, and that's what makes it such a challenge to put it in that space and still achieve the development opportunity of the parcels.
Where do you get that number from?
You can do that.
I mean, I understand 60 feet plus 60 feet's 120 feet, but why is that so crucial to plating this out?
The zoning in this area would require 5,500 square-foot lots, and so by the time you get in 17 lots, run your pro forma, you're essentially backing into the value of the Tubbs Hill property. If that makes sense.
So that's the math that we're dealing with?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what he's... Sorry, just to be clear, Phil, that's what you were talking about, is that when you design it, you could end up with 14 lots there. They'd be not as deep in order to achieve that minimum ratio on the lot, but that's the design-level conversation.
I didn't hear that last part.
But that's the design-level conversation.
Correct, and there's the revenue side of it, and then there's also just the practical matter of the shallower and shallower you make a lot, the harder it is to build a functional home within it.
Other questions for Phil or Monty?
Thank you.
One thing that I wanted to add just is, again, this is all in the design level, and at the time that if this land trade is approved, there'll be opportunity to design that trail and what is the best fit there. The one thing that I want to say is that I think people remember when we were first talking about this parcel of ground, that Mary Lou Reed came forward and she pledged $50,000 out of her foundation, as well as George Saylor, as president of the Tubbs Hill Foundation, came forward and pledged $200,000 through a sale of their lot that Art Manley had given them. And what this land trade, if we're able to accomplish that, that $250,000 can be set aside, it doesn't have to be set aside for that land purchase, it can be set aside now for something else to enhance Tubbs Hill. So that is an added benefit. What we're trying to do here is to really keep that in public hands, but as well as make the Urban Renewal Agency whole, and Urban Renewal has invested over $2.5 million in trails. And whatever development that they can do here, we've got a lot of trails to develop through the Atlas Mill Site, through the Douglas property that we looked at, and so those are going to be some available funds that are going to be able to be spent enhancing trails. So that really was the goal of this, is to just keep that land at the base of Tubbs Hill in public hands and to also make Ignite whole, and they're going to be able to invest that back into public projects. Ron.
Amy, did you want to say something?
You can go first, I'll go after you.
Well, I was just going to make a motion.
I do have a question then. Can a motion be made with the condition to ensure that the trail is equal to or better than it is now, and adding specifics to some of the requests from the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation, to ensure them that we're serious about protecting the trail?
Sure, yeah.
You got to question enforcement, though, because when I hear the words "equal" and "better," I think of the American Legion ball field.
Well, but Amy had some specifics...
It's a lot better now than it was.
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion and include...
Amy had some specifics, though, right?
I do have specifics.
She had some specifics tied to that. So, did we have someone that's going to make a motion, Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that authorized the city to enter into an agreement with Ignite Coeur d'Alene to convey land via a trade involving Ignite Coeur d'Alene-owned property located on Young Avenue, south of City Hall, for city-owned property adjacent to Tilford Lane and Riverstone, and also that, in the motion, that, as Amy mentioned, and you...
With the addition, so maybe if you make the motion, Amy can second it if you wish to and add the things that you would like to add.
Okay, that works?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion with the added conditions that the width remains 15 feet, the retaining wall, oh, excuse me, sorry, my notes are chicken scratch here, that the grade be addressed. I mean, I would prefer it at 2% what it currently is. I don't know if we can make that strong a recommendation, but 5% I think is going to be a challenge by ADA, even though I do know it's acceptable. So I would like to see the grade addressed at 2%. And then that expanded parking lot, that a connector be added south, one to the east and one to the west, south of the parking lot, to the east and to the west for trail users.
Okay, so Ron, were you agreeable to those additions to that? So we have a motion and a second further discussion. Dan?
I'm not going to support this. And, yeah, Woody's really shocked with this.
I'm sorry. You just keep shocking me.
First of all, what we're doing here actually is dealing with the Urban Renewal Agency that bought something and had no clue what they were going to do with it. And so I'm happy that they bought the property on Tubbs Hill, because now we will own it, I mean, whatever happens here. In fact, we'll own it if we do nothing, because in four years, they dissolve and that property reverts to the city. I think they won't develop it, that's a red herring. They would be fools if they did that. They're very conscious of their opinion in the public, and for them to move forward and develop that property would just kill them. It would really be terrible. So I don't think they're going to develop it, and I think if we didn't do anything now, we would actually do what we set out to do when we directed them to buy this property, which is to make it a trail. So the intent of council and the intent of Urban Renewal, as Mr. Gady said, was to make this a trail. That's why they bought it. That was our intent. We wanted connectivity. When Doug Eastwood was here as a Parks and Rec Director, he talked about a way to get from Sanders Beach all the way up to Mill River by parks, that you would have this green trail that would go all the way up there, and I thought that was great. That's why I supported us buying that railroad property, because I thought this is great. And now we're chipping away at it. Open space is a finite commodity. We're always making houses. I mean, if you're going to say, well, we're going to put in these houses and we're going to get property taxes out of that, well, whatever. So we hire another bureaucrat in City Hall, woo-hoo for everyone, but if we have open space, that lasts forever. And that's why we bought the thing in the first place, that's why they bought the thing in the first place. That's what's going to happen south of City Hall, and that's what's going to happen on the trail if we didn't do anything. So I don't want to see more houses, especially when we have a limited commodity of open space, especially when we're committing $8 million on the line to buy the Atlas Mill Site for open space. So I can't support this. I just say, let it go, let the land revert to the city in four years when that district dissolves, and we'll have more open space, and we'll have a nice trail, which is why we bought it.
But we already have a trail now, they're going to have a trail, so there is the connectivity already there.
We can use that argument to build houses on every square inch of the trail.
Well, but we're not going to do that. I mean, this makes economic...
Be started.
This makes economic development sense. At some point in time, we all love parks and trails, but at some point in time, you have to have economic development to help pay for them, or you're going to raise everybody else's taxes. You got to have revenue to keep up these parks, and if we want our parks to be maintained at a level that we need to maintain them, there has to be economic development.
And we could make that argument to sell off every park we have.
And, you know, that's not...
I know that's not going to happen, it's just happening tonight.
No, it's not a park.
Mr. Mayor, I call for the question.
I didn't get a chance to ask about trees. Is there any provision within this piece of property that some of those trees that we had talked about are of a certain dimension, they have to be replaced if they're cut down? Does any, is anybody here urban forestry, Monty? Is there a replacement value for those large trees that are lost if this gets developed? That's my...
We will require street trees to be planted by all the houses that are built there as part of the urban forestry, street tree requirement. The trees along there, there might be a couple that are pretty good size. The rest are what I call railroad trees, that have been tossed, seeds have been tossed out to build like a barrier, and they're really thin, it's generally not healthy. When that hall road was done and the trail, before the trail was put in, a big two or three or four, in some places taller berm was put against those tree trunks, and they're not the healthiest trees, but they will be replaced.
They'll be replaced.
Probably more with deciduous trees, things off the street tree list.
Thank you.
Dan?
Well, as I look at this from, I don't have as long a perspective as Ron, but I've got about 66 years of Coeur d'Alene perspective on it, and, you know, and we're weighing different things and priorities, but for me, I guess it still comes down pretty simple and easy. If there's a chance to buy some land adjacent to Tubbs Hill and acquire that, that, I think that's great, and in terms of what Ignite or might do or might not, which for the record, actually now I'm a new member as the mayor, so I think there's some, you know, it's not going to go totally crazy off the rails, but we have a trail there now, there's still going to be a trail, and also, we do have to pay for this stuff, and so, again, when you balance it all out, I'm very comfortable with this. The only thing that gives me a little concern is I was part of a process where dealing with a road and that grade and how long, I'm concerned if we lock them into 2% that that might be pretty tough. Maybe, you know, maybe it can be somewhere in between, but I don't know how hard and fast that part of it is. I'm hearing from them, they're going to do everything they can to mitigate meat in the middle, but I am very in support of this.
Call for the question.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin.
No.
English.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Motion to recess to October 5, 2017 at noon in the library community room to workshop a review of BDEPA study.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed until October 5. We are recessed until October 5.